All right, good morning, everyone. I will now call the June 9th, 2025 regular meeting of the Public Safety Commission to order at 9:34 in the morning. Kevin Tiet, could you please call the roll?
Chair Hogan.
Here.
Vice Chair Lou.
Here.
Commissioner Gee. Commissioner Cervantes. Commissioner Munoz. Commissioner Sanko.
Here.
Commissioner Reza.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Tiet. Any public comments for this morning?
Yes, we do, from Yvonne LaRose.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rose.
Good morning. I am before you today because of the things that have started evolving regarding public safety. And as far as the impact of federal orders that have come down during the weekend that are impacting Los Angeles specifically, but it can pour into South Pasadena. Senator Perez, over the weekend, also issued an informational brochure about how knowing your rights if you are confronted by immigration authorities. I have posted that on Facebook. I will forward it to our Public Safety Commission and links to the brochure. But in addition to having lost my phone for the last 21 hours, I have been on edge this weekend, wondering what to do, how to handle ourselves. And at this point in time, immigration authorities are masked. It's said that some of those who are part of ICE are current members of the Proud Boys who were part of the insurrection that happened in January 2020, whatever it was, 24. And as we've seen, all the histories of deportations, it's not simply focused on Latinos. It's across the board, all populations. I don't feel safe, and I would like some input on what we're going to do. I know we have AB 54, but it appears that is not going to be sufficient. National Guard has been called, and they're standing on ready. And Marines are going to be initiated as well. And Marines have the philosophy of do what you're told. So again, I am scared. I will admit that. And I'd like to know what we need to do, how our police department and our first responders will be responding, will enforcing our rights and our protections as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Moving on to item number two on the agenda, Water Conservation Management Analyst, Ms. Danielle Garcia, and Principal Engineer Michael Veritens?
Burtanian.
Burtanian, sorry. Will now make a presentation on the tree ordinance revision.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the Public Works Department, we thank you for your time this morning. My name, as Chair had mentioned, is Danielle Garcia. I currently serve as the Water Conservation Management Analyst. And joining me here today is Michael Burtanians, who is the Acting Co-Director at Public Works. So we are here at a direction from City Council to provide an update on the proposed improvements to the city's current tree ordinance, and additionally to gather your feedback on the staff recommended changes. So as I mentioned, this ordinance update stems from City Council requests to review the existing ordinance for areas of improvement, specifically looking at increasing the efficiency in the permitting process, reevaluating the criteria for removals and trimming permits, as well as addressing the contemporary urban forest challenges that we've recently been seeing. These concerns were discussed most recently at the May 7 City Council meeting, where City Council approved a more prescriptive language for the code. This update aims to streamline the removal of hazardous trees and similarly trimming of dead or hazardous branches, both essential in enhancing public safety as well as promoting urban forest health. Following, again, the Council's direction and through a comprehensive review of neighboring cities' ordinances, staff developed recommendations focused on improving efficiency, transparency, and general enforceability of the permitting process, appeals, removal and trimming criteria, and overall strategies to maintain and enhance the city's tree canopy, while also addressing, again, those modern urban challenges. So on screen, you'll see the seven cities that staff analyzed, including Alhambra, Arcadia, Serra Madre, La Canyada, Glendale, San Marino, and Clermont. We also highlighted which of the cities are designated as tree cities, similar to South Pasadena. A tree city designation recognizes a community's commitment to tree planting, maintenance, and management of its urban forest. To qualify, a city has to have a tree board or a relevant department enforce a tree, a community tree ordinance, celebrate Arbor Day annually, as well as spend at least $2 per capita on urban forestry. Within this review, staff focused on a few key areas, including maintenance responsibility, or also known as ownership, development and land use, trimming and pruning criteria, as well as removal criteria, general permitting process, and as well enforcement and compliance. It is important to note here that our analysis focused mostly on what's written in policy, rather than solely on the implementation practices or what is completed in the field. We didn't include all of the research here today, but we will give you some key takeaways from our research. So under maintenance and responsibility, other cities often have a more defined maintenance roles specifying city and resident responsibilities on public and private property, including right-of-way easements. Additionally, cities outline the role of commissions or committees, similar to our Natural Resources and Environmental Commission, specifically looking at reviewing permits, appeals, maintaining an approved tree list, or even advising on urban canopy practices. Our research additionally identified opportunities to provide clear maintenance direction for trees on private and undeveloped land, which leads into development and land use. Similar to South Pasadena's current tree ordinance, many cities require tree surveys, arborist reports, and protection plans when removals or trimming are associated with development. However, staff additionally noted opportunities to modernize the ordinance to address evolving development needs, including more integration with local and state standards. Shifting into trimming and pruning criteria, permitting varied significantly across different cities. Some cities only require permits for native species, while others require no permit for trimming, as long as it's performed by a certified arborist. Some cities only regulate trimming with cities that are on the public right-of-way as well. Staff here sees an excellent opportunity to provide clearer thresholds within our own ordinance for trimming to reduce enforcement challenges. Next, shifting into removal criteria, staff found that the current removal process can be quite lengthy and financially burdensome for our residents with requirements such as inspection fees, arborist reports, GIS mapping for notifications, and the actual cost to plant the replacement trees. So within our research, that was something high priority to look at. Neighboring cities often exclude certain tree types, so palm trees, fruit trees, from permitting, focusing significantly on a protected tree list, which typically evolves of native trees, a heritage designation tree, or well-adapted street trees. And second to last category, permitting process. Currently, additionally, the permitting process is complex and can be quite time-consuming for our residents, as well as staff, often leading to confusion and disputes. So other cities, you know, streamline their permitting by protecting, as I mentioned, protected trees, setting clear thresholds as triggers for what is going to be going into permitting through staff or through a committee, also requiring professional oversight, so enlisting specific contractors that are approved through the city, and that's what residents are able to use. Additionally, while exempting just routine maintenance, therefore reducing homeowner burdens. Some other calls, some other cities integrate tree permits into their development review process, aligning them with site plans and building permits to minimize redundancy. Similarly, we currently do this through our ordinance as well. Another notable finding is that many cities require trimming or removal work on protected trees to be done, as I mentioned, by those certified arborists and licensed contractors. This ensures quality of standards and proper insurance. And lastly, enforcement and compliance. You know, approaches, again, varied by city. Many cities balancing enforcement with staff capacity by focusing on protected trees or using a clear criteria, as well as using, again, that professional oversight. This was able to lessen the burden on staff while also protecting the urban forest. Cities such as Serra Madre have a very strong enforcement provisions with, as I mentioned, clear permit requirements, consistent inspections, and defined penalties. They also tightly regulate their removals and substantial trimming, ensuring compliance through code and staff oversight. In conclusion, staff's research highlights the need for simplification, clarity, and modernization of the South Pasadena's tree ordinance. Best practices emphasize clear definitions, qualified professionals in alignment with community needs, such as being able to fight fire risk and being able to manage urban forests, urban forests with best practices. Overall, the direction is toward a more user-friendly, enforceable, and sustainable ordinance that balances tree preservation with practical implementation. Staff presented to the Natural Resources and Environmental Commission, NRAC, a few weeks ago. Overall, they expressed support for the staff's recommendations, which I'll review in the next couple of slots, and particularly highlighting how the proposed changes will simplify the urban canopy management, as well as ensuring its long-term health. Some key feedback that I want to just call out. Commissioners did mention considering ways to incentivize compliance, additionally with that replacement tree requirement emphasizing the use of native trees. Similarly, providing education and supplemental documents to support permitting, making sure that our residents are aware of what they're signing up for with putting in a permit for removal or tree trimming. Additionally, offering more information on appropriate planting, trimming, or pruning seasons, as well as engaging with relevant stakeholders, such as our fire department, insurance companies, and legal experts throughout our update, as well as exploring an urban forestry management plan, or having similar goals publicized to accompany the ordinance update. So now I'll go through the staff recommendations. So staff has identified the following areas of improvement, based on the research that I briefly touched on, the stakeholder feedback we've already received, as well as experience from enforcement practices. So starting out with maintenance and responsibility, staff is recommending utilizing standard city communication methods, instituting more resources on best practices for common tree care, utilizing our social media, utilizing our website to make sure that residents know when to trim their oak trees, when's the best time for replanting, and making sure they're just aware of that process. Shifting into development and land use, staff is recommending that we align the code with, as I mentioned, city and state's current standards, as well as expectations for development, and similarly developing a comprehensive urban forest management plan. So this will allow us to create a measurable goal, as well as deeper insight into what our existing urban canopy looks like. Similarly, moving into trimming and pruning criteria, staff is recommending integrating guidance on the optimal times of the year to trim oak trees, as I mentioned before, with just our education, streamlining the permit process, including clear tangible guidelines early in the process to help applicants understand and comply with requirements, and lastly, reviewing and revising the language related to heritage trees. Shifting into enforcement and compliance, also looking at removing subjective criteria and subjective language, allowing violations to be applied consistently through staff, additionally focusing the ordinance on protective trees. And our last two recommendations are around removal criteria and permitting. Within removal criteria, we, staff is recommending revising code language to streamline the tree removal process, as well as adjusting the replacement requirements and amending approval criteria. Additionally, we're recommending redefining the appeal process to only require a notification letter when a director denies an application, an applicant has appealed director's decision, or a director refers the decision to NRAC. And lastly, under removal criteria, staff is recommending, again, to redefine the language to more efficiently address the modern challenges relating to existing trees, so that includes fire risk and being able to defend your home with either the removal of the tree or integration of water-drought-tolerant plants and trees. And that's something that we're going to really be focusing on in that language update. And lastly, under permitting, staff is recommending simplifying the permitting process to ensure native trees are protected. This will minimize time and costs associated with reviewing, as well as processing tree removal permits. Additionally, as I mentioned before, implementing lower replacement requirements, as well as requiring 100-foot radius notification letter, and this similarly applies here, the removal application letter will only apply if it's associated with developments denied or approved by the director, or the director refers decision to NRAC. And lastly, going to be looking again at the code language to correct the appeal fee. Currently, we have it set where if an appellant is appealing the case, the person filing the application pays for the fee. We'd like to revise that so that the appeal fee is to be paid by the individual filing the appeal. And here is our proposed timeline. We did, as I mentioned, take this presentation to NRAC on May. We're here today presenting to this commission. Next, we'll be moving over to our Public Works Commission to close out our roadshow, and then finalize in council updates in July. Once we receive the formal recommendations to be going back to the drafting and ordinance, we'll be aiming to release a first reading of it in late summer of this year, with a second reading in fall of this year, and anticipating to hopefully have a new ordinance in effect in winter of next year. And that is it for my presentation today. I do have a couple of additional slides there if you'd like to review the updates. We're looking at our permitting process, but I will now pause here for any questions or any feedback on our recommendations.
Great, thank you, Ms. Garcia, for the presentation. Any questions, colleagues?
I have a recommendation. When you were talking about native trees, it is, a lot of people don't seem to understand the importance of having native trees around, and that is to save our butterflies and having birds, and that way also to pollinate everything around, and that these trees are actually made for this climate. Therefore, if we bring some real pretty decorative trees but are not from here, we are really not helping the environment. And many times, it ends up that the tree dies on you. So I really think it is so important to emphasize how we need to plant native trees, trees that increase the canopy on South Pasadena, so our climate stays cool, much cooler than Alhambra or any adjacent places. So I encourage, and perhaps if we could have any incentives in working with some of the nurseries around in getting those trees available and give perhaps a money discount or whatever, so we promote that we need to have trees and we need to have native trees.
Yes, thank you so much. I think that's an excellent call, Commissioner. You know, and a few of our NRAC Commissioners has mentioned that as well, really having that emphasis on replacing with native trees, and they are great for our pollinators and great just all around for our environment. So that's definitely something we're going to be including. We do currently have a rebate through our water conservation program for drought-tolerant and native trees. So that's already in place. Once we get our updated list, that'll fold into the tree ordinance of the native selections, we'll make sure that's included in our rebate as well. So you can get about $100 per tree for up to 10 trees. So we're ready for natives to be making a bigger stand in South Pasadena. Thank you.
I would second Commissioner Cervantes's comments that we're cooler than Alhambra and that we stay so. On our street, I live on Fremont, and a question that comes up frequently is what's the responsibility of a homeowner for a tree that's located between the sidewalk and the street? Is that on one's property, and what's the homeowner's responsibility there? What if they don't like the tree?
Yeah.
If they want to replace it, for example, with another native tree? Maybe this could be part of the communication out to the community as to what the roles and responsibilities are, and if you have any comment on that, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, yeah, and currently, it is loosely incorporated into our existing ordinance, but with this update, we want to make it a little bit clear what the responsibilities are. That's called out as the right-of-way public easement. So that's the little strip that's in front of property, residents' houses, that is technically their property, along with any trees that are planted there. Currently, we ask that, you know, they're just generally protected, as well as watered if they need water to get to that establishment period, or just to keep it alive during, you know, these heat waves that we get. In terms of removal, though, that's something that I believe the city covers cost for the removal. If a resident is, you know, noticing that it's, you know, not getting trimmed properly, or if it's just generally notwithstanding the current climate that it's in, so the city will cover the cost to remove that, either replant it there or in another public property place. But generally, it is a responsibility of residents whose property it is to maintain that tree, mostly through watering and just making sure no one, you know, graffiti's on it or anything, or tries to chop it down for whatever reason. But it is the responsibility of the residents, which we'll be outlining a lot more strictly in the code.
One last question. What are the fees for referral to the committee or for to appeal any considerations of these matters?
Yeah, so we do have, and I'm going to pull up my notes here, because I have them, but we do have three fees associated with our permitting process. The first is $141, which is collected at the beginning of the permitting process, and that helps just pay for the inspection fee. So depending if it's trimming or removal, that $141 just covers the cost of staff sending out an arborist to go and inspect the tree and the property. Additionally, there is a $364 cost to cover staff working with the applicant to make sure that they're aware of all the costs that are associated, if they need a GIS mapping to send out their notification letter, if they need a topography report survey to ensure that their replacement trees are able to be appropriately situated on their property. That sort of just covers our time working with the applicant to make sure that they're feeling comfortable throughout the process. And then there's an additionally, a $424 collection deposit, and that covers the planting of a new tree. So once the trees, the resident has planted that tree, they receive that deposit back. And my goal will also be adding to the costs.
All right, yes. I believe you were also asking about the cost of the appeal for our municipal code. It's the actual cost, including staff time, that is associated with the appeal. So, you know, if one of our assistant engineers or management analysts spent two, three hours putting together a staff report, gathering background information, you know, preparing all the documents that are needed to go to City Council or to an NRAC, that would be the cost of the appeal. So it would be case by case. If it's something much more complicated, it could be, you know, higher. If it's something much more simple, it would be less. We haven't had an instance yet where we've asked the applicant, because right now, our municipal code requires the applicant pay for the appeal. So if I was submitting a permit application, someone in the city appealed my application, and it had to go in front of a commissioner, a city council, we didn't see it was fair to have the applicant pay, and we felt it should be the appellant, and that was brought up in City Council as well, and we clarified that in our revision to our ordinance. We're going to change it to say the appellant will pay for filing an appeal.
I have a question. So let's say you have a 100-year-old tree that is either on your property, behind your property, and that tree becomes diseased. Who is responsible? Because, you know, I have a neighbor, you know, falls under the no-good deed goes unpunished. He reported it, that it looked pretty sick. It was technically on a private street, but the city said it was, part of it was on his property, even though it was on the other side of the fence. He ended up eating six grand to remove the tree and plant new trees. So if there is a diseased tree that has been around for 100 years, is it still the position of the city that regardless of how old that tree is and where the disease come from, that you are responsible for it? Because, you know, trees, the roots are, what, deep as some of these trees are, you could water it, you could put your hose out there all day long, it's not going to do any good. That, those roots are so deep, and if it's diseased by something that has nothing to do with the homeowner, is there any process for, he had to eat it, this was about two years ago, and he had the means, pay for it, $6,000 hurts, I don't care what you're making. But a lot of people that in the city that don't have that kind of income, does the city look at providing some recourse for them to not have to pay that kind of money to remove and then replant new trees?
For a while, it had not. On May 7th, we did go to City Council to amend our ordinance to include language that says if a tree is dead, dying, diseased, or damaged, such that it's an imminent threat to life or property, the replacement requirement would be one tree. So the cost of actually removing the tree, the city can't, you know, assist with how much it costs to hire a contractor to come and remove a tree, but what we can assist with is lowering that replacement requirement, because, for example, a 42-inch diameter oak tree would require eight replacement trees on your property. And so we collect a deposit of $424 per tree that, once the applicant fulfills that replacement requirement, they can have the refund, you know, they could be refunded deposit. But a lot of people have a challenge planting eight trees on their property, and these are 24-inch box trees. So we kept hearing that over and over again, and that kept coming up. So we created a revision to our ordinance where if the tree is dead, dying, diseased, or damaged such that it's an imminent threat to life or property, instead of following the replacement requirement that's outlined in our municipal code, we amended it so that in that instance, you're only required to replant one tree, because it's really a situation that's out of the hands of the property owner. And as far as you were asking about who would be responsible in that instance, if it's in the back of the property or the front of the, whoever's property the tree is on, that's the person who's, you know, responsible. We hear a lot of times, well, my neighbor has a really large tree, and it looks like it's leaning, what can I do? Well, Well, it's their tree. Notify your neighbor that this is what I'm seeing, and I think this is a dangerous situation, and that way you've put them on notice. But ultimately, it's their responsibility to figure out, do they want to take on that liability of keeping that tree there? And, you know, should something happen, they've been notified of it. So a lot of times it's a neighbor-to-neighbor issue. But the city would assist them in processing the permit app, you know, the neighbor to process that permit application. You know, we wouldn't be, I wouldn't be able to put in a tree removal application on my neighbor's behalf. Is that the answer?
Just a quick question on one of your slides, on the permitting slide. I believe I saw a notification of one hundred feet. Are we talking from the property or from the tree itself?
From the property. The property that the tree is on, it's about a hundred-foot radius that the resident then has to get G I S mapping to see exactly what that looks like. And then they send us the list of addresses for us to then send out a letter of notification for.
And part of the notification process is to let the neighbors know that a removal is happening? Or is this, is it only just to removals or is it to trimming? Is it to?
Currently, it's for trimming as well, but with our updated permitting process, we're going to be removing that. So it's just for removals. And I can actually go through the slides if you'd like as well. So these are existing tree removing or tree trimming for not associated with land development. This is additionally a tree removal not associated with land development. This is tree trimming associated with development. So you'll see, and each of these are pretty similar. But once it's approved, it does go through that fifteen-day public comment period. If a comment is received, then it goes to N R E C. And with that fifteen-day comment period, that's when the hundred-foot notification goes out. I'm going to shoot forward a couple of slides. So our proposed new tree trimming permit process is going to remove, whether or not this is associated with land development. You can see it through the flow charts, a lot stream, a lot more streamlined. So once it's approved, we're just going to completely remove the public comment period because it will fall within the criteria allowing it to be trimmed. So with our update in our language within the code, we're going to make it clear the thresholds that you're allowed to trim. And those are set by a standard that's across the boards, and most cities use A N S I. And I believe it's about if you're, you can trim up to 10% of live foliage. And anything past that, you're going to need a permit for. And that's just general health for trees. You don't want to be, you know, multiple times a year trimming more than 10% because then the tree loses its viability to stay alive. So we wanted to make sure that that's clear, make sure it falls within the criteria, so there's no way to dispute it. And it allows our permit applicants to have a lot more fast-tracked process to getting, you know, their tree trimming done and not having to wait three, four, or five months to just get their permits approved.
Thank you. You answered my question. I can tell I was trying to go in the direction of streamlining. And this is well taken care of. Last thought or question, in the event of a, another wind event emergency, where we have significant trees that have fallen and all over the place. Does that process, is there some mechanism built in to where in the event of emergency, where we've had another wind event, do this permit, does this permit process still apply? Or is there another track where we necessarily don't have to notify neighbors of, if we have an entire block of downed oak trees, for instance? Is there something built in?
Yes, yeah. And I'm sure Mike will probably tap in a little bit to my response. But we'll make sure that's included in the criteria for what gets permitted and what doesn't get permitted. Like you mentioned, oak trees, the permits that we're going to be shifting towards are just for protected trees. Oaks will be on that list. But say a whole line of oak trees went down, you know, because of some natural disaster, that'll be included in the criteria as an expedited, expedited path. You know, similar to what was discussed on May seventh, you know, trees that are hazardous, that are just dead or just not viable anymore. There's no other route to be able to get them, you know, keep them as they are. We are trying to make sure that, you know, they don't have to go through the strenuous process, even though it is simplified, to be able to get, you know, their replacements completed and the permits approved.
And if I can add to that, we do have an exception in our municipal code currently that does not require a permit for damaged trees, damaged by natural storm, fire, or other natural disasters. So in the January storm, we had a lot of trees that went down, and a resident didn't need to contact us and notify people within a hundred feet of his property line that he needs to remove a tree that's down. Nor did they incur the permit fees.
Oh, great, great. Thank you.
So anything on public property, the city is maintaining, yeah. We have city trees that we have a contracted arborist company that comes to maintain all the trees. You'll see them, they're West Coast Arborists, they maintain them. And we have a list of what our city-owned trees, typically they're within the, from your property line, between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. It's called the parkway. That's generally where they're located. Sometimes you have trees that have just grown, you know, this is more the hillsides, but they're not city trees. They're not on your property, but they're on public property. We don't maintain those, and if somebody needs to remove them, you can. The difficult part is if someone, if you hire a contractor to do work on your private property, they don't need general liability insurance, naming the city as additionally insured. But if they want to do work on public property, like with any of our contractors, then we have an additional requirement that they have general liability insurance naming the city as additionally insured. If someone identifies a tree that's on public property in front of their house, and it's not a city-owned tree, we'll allow, you know, and it meets the criteria for removal, we'll allow the removal. The only difference is we'll ask the contractor to provide a general liability certificate naming the city as additionally insured because they're doing work on public property. But maintenance of city-owned trees, you'll see us trimming all these trees on Mission, for example, or Fremont. Those are city trees that we maintain, trim. If they get sick, diseased, or die, we'll remove them and replant them. The only requirement from the property owner is to maintain the watering of whatever is adjacent to their private property.
Mr. Garcia, I have a question on slide, oh, there's no number. I think it's four, N R E C feedback. That one. So trying to look at this through the, through the Public Safety Committee Commission lens. The one that stands out to me is top right, allow for collaboration with key stakeholders, including fire department. That's the one that the light bulb went off in my head. That's why it's here. That's why it's at Public Safety. The last slide that you had showed the timeline of events and of how it's going to go through the process. Where does that collaboration fall into your timeline?
So that collaboration will fall after the July sixteenth council update. So at July sixteenth, we're going to take this presentation to council, take the feedback that we received today from N R E C as well as the P W I C, Public Works Infrastructure Commission. We'll let them know, you know, we received this feedback, we received, you know, we shared our research. Can you give us, you know, final direction to update this ordinance? Following that, we'll then give the first draft a go. And during that process, we'll be inviting other stakeholders, as well as the fire department, looking to our legal experts, as well as any homeowner experts, homeowner insurance experts to come and give some contributions to make sure that we're covering all of the callouts that we're recently seeing with the different climates that we're, you know, having, the different windstorms, different firestorms, making sure that those are appropriately addressed within the ordinance language.
Yeah, thank you for that. Just, I guess, curiosity, why not do it before updating the council or updating the commissions? Why do it after? Because couldn't things potentially change? And then you put something on paper in the draft that wasn't necessarily what you discussed?
Yeah, and that's sort of the direction we're hoping to receive from council. Right now, the direction we received is to just look at our ordinance, where are the missing gaps? What can we improve upon, where our community needs not being met? And that's sort of what this sort of roadshow of presentations is housing, that discussion, that thought to make sure that it's included in the first draft. You know, we'll be going through this a couple iterations of the draft. So we'll make, you know, be making sure to include and update council on anything that wasn't previously discussed. But with conversations with our key stakeholders, we'll be make sure to include enterprise the public of as well.
Got it. Thank you. Anything else?
One last comment to piggyback on that. I'd strongly advise, if you haven't already, speaking with Chief Lloyd and other S M Es in the fire department, it seems like management of fuel, in other, around our municipality in light of recent events, be really wise to get their input on management of trees and how that affects their work.
Yeah, that would be, that's a, that's a great call out. We'll definitely include. We're already going to them for their fire severity map that they'll be rolling out. So we'll include that into our considerations as well. Thank you.
Dr. Senko, just for the benefit of us who don't have M Ds, S M E's, subject matter experts?
Yes. S M Es.
Thank you.
It's a good, good short abbreviation.
I have one final comment, and that is if we, when we revise the policies or what, how we go about what we advise on tree removal as well as planting new trees or whatever, what my feeling from hearing for the different people around in the city is how much frustration they get from dealing with City Hall. And I really think that your efforts are geared in the right direction. City Hall should not be just there to oppose and be extremely costly to whatever we, a homeowner needs to do to keep their home safe. Although we also, no matter what, we need to keep the city a tree city full of beautiful trees and with a canopy. However, we need more cooperation between the folks that decide on what goes on with the trees and the homeowners. I firmly believe that this is something that frustrates a whole lot of folks, and it needs to be remedied.
Yes, and appreciate you calling that out, and that's definitely something we've seen as well with this process. You know, just speaking specifically on tree ordinance. But we really feel education is a good first step as well, and making sure that our website is flush with resources that residents can go through at any time, at any convenience, at any pace they'd like. And really just making sure that they're well-informed and have adequate, you know, person behind the phone to be able to talk to them and make sure their answers are getting answered. But thank you for the comment. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else? Good. All right. Thank you both. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Moving on to item number three on the agenda, Public Safety Commission meeting times. So fellow commissioners, we need to discuss what time we will be meeting, what day going forward. Chief?
Thank you, Commissioners. Brian Solinsky, Chief of Police. I just wanted to reiterate what the chair had said, is that each of you have received a packet with proposed dates and times. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review those, and now would be the time. Really, it's your time as a commission to discuss what the, what the commission feels is the best time and dates to meet so that it is not only accessible to yourselves, but also the public. I mean, that really is the goal of this commission, is to act as the voice from a public safety perspective of the community and really relay that to the council. So I would ask that the chair, if you wouldn't mind, sir, leading the discussion amongst your peers, and then if there is a amendable, or agreeable, rather, time, that we can take a motion on that and a vote.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. For those of you who were here last month, I know we had a brief discussion on the absence of our, some of our colleagues every month. And Monday, during the workdays, a little bit difficult for those of us who have, who are working. So I think I would be open to proposals. One thing I would throw out, Mondays are a little difficult, I think. It's usually the busiest day of the week for a lot of us. I know one of the options was the last Tuesday of the month. My preference, just for discussion, would be evenings, five thirty, six, six thirty, somewhere around there. I think that would be better for the community as well, who gets out of work. But open for, open for discussion if anything, anyone has anything to add?
Tuesday evenings work for me. Same here. Tuesday evenings, yeah, a lot better.
Tuesdays work for me, however, I like to ask if it's not too late because I hate to drive in the dark. So if we keep, can keep it like a five thirty or six thirty, it's all right. But if we go later than that, it's, for me, it's a public safety issue. I just don't like to drive in the dark. I can do it. And if the rest of my fellow commissioners want that, I go along with it. But that's my recommendation.
Tuesdays, five thirty's good with me.
Okay, sounds like a motion would be in order. Anybody want to make a motion for?
I'm sorry, if I may interject, since we are talking about time before we have a motion and a vote, public comment?
Are there any public comments?
No public comment.
Thank you, Chief. I would entertain a motion if anyone had one.
I second the motion.
So just so we're clear, what exactly is the motion?
Yeah, I just said I would entertain a motion if anyone wanted to make one. There is no motion on the deck.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to switch our meetings to the last Tuesday of the month for a time at five thirty.
Second?
Now a roll call.
Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Hogan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Liu? Commissioner G? Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Senko?
Aye.
Commissioner Reza?
Aye.
We have a quorum. Motion passes. Sorry.
Motion passes. So five thirty P M in this building last Tuesday of the month. And that'll take effect at the next commission meeting. Which is August because I believe we are dark for July, so August. But we will put something out to each of the commissioners, and then also we'll note it on our city website for anybody that's watching at home, the new times for the commission meetings. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to item number four of the agenda, minutes of the Public Safety Commission regular meeting of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I approve.
Do I have a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Hogan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Liu? Commissioner G? Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Call up Sting.
Commissioner Senko?
Aye.
Commissioner Reza?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Divi, are we good? Moving on to item number five of the agenda, minutes of the Public Safety Commission regular meeting of May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Yes, I, I support that. Yes, I I I support that. Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Hogan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lou. Commissioner G. Commissioner Cervantes.
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz.
Upstain.
Commissioner Sanco.
Aye.
Commissioner Reza.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to information reports. Item number six on the agenda, City Council Liaison Communications. I do not see any representative from City Council. So moving along then to item number seven, Staff Liaison Communications. Captain Porras, you have anything from fire? Chief Solinsky, please.
Good morning again, commissioners. Chief Lloyd is is unable to attend. Captain Porras is representing on his behalf. But from the police department perspective, obviously, this weekend, we all saw what's going on in Los Angeles, as we heard from public comment. I just wanted to advise that the the police department and the city, you know, we are proud of our of our heritage here in South Pasadena as being a diverse and multicultural community, and we respect the rights of all individuals. Having said that, is the police department's goal that that we provide a safe community for all of those people that live, work, or travel through South Pasadena. South Pasadena Police Department does not do any enforcement of immigration laws. That that responsibility lies solely with the federal authorities. However, South Pasadena Police Department is committed to ensuring public safety, and that is regardless of whether it's in South Pasadena or if we get called out to other jurisdictions. So currently, we have been deployed, our officers have been deployed to Los Angeles. That is purely for the purpose of ensuring public safety. They will be given roles or tasks to ensure that those people that are abiding by the law can freely demonstrate and exercise their First Amendment rights. So having said that, we we as as part of South Pasadena's rich history, you know, we we are an inclusionary community, and we respect those rights. We just ask that people do it lawfully, peacefully. So that is all I have as far as the current situation goes. The other update I have is regarding our staffing level is that we are continuing to move forward with our staffing. We're almost fully staffed. We just had one officer graduate the academy. He's on patrol and in training. And I have three more in the academy currently. Two will be graduating at the end of the month, and then another one is just starting. So we are really done a lot of work, our staff, and gearing up and trying to bring us up to fully staffed level. And we're continuing that as we move forward. In, I'm sorry, December is typically the time we see retirements in in pers organizations, and we certainly expect to see a couple acknowledging that. We're continuing our push forward in recruiting and training so that we can have a seamless transition as our retirees leave and go into the next chapter of their life. We'll have a new batch of recruits coming in so that we won't be suffering any any service related issues to the community. So other than that, that's all I have this week. But I'm happy to take any questions that anyone may have.
Chief, I'm just gonna say that that's amazing. I mean, two and a half years ago, Commissioner Cervantes and I, you were coming before this commission, and I think your staffing levels were down 10 to 12 officers. And you had a chief, you needed a chief, and in in just two short years, to see that you're almost fully staffed is absolutely, it's sensational, really. And that kudos to you and your team, and obviously, the new chief, the chief's been here about a year now, over a year, to see that the department is almost fully staffed for the protection of this community. It's just, it's just, it makes it makes us on the on the commission just feel great about that. So just want to commend you for that and and all of your team.
Thank you. It certainly is a team effort, and I couldn't have done it without the help of the Public Safety Commission and the advocacy that you guys have shown, our city council, and then, of course, our amazing staff. You know, they've done a heck of a job getting out there, recruiting at all the events. Deputy chief was out at an event over the weekend for the Special Olympics, and we had our recruiting staff out there. You know, there's just a lot of people that are interested in South Pasadena. Certainly is a premier destination. So we're utilizing that to our advantage and highlighting what a great community we have. So thank you all.
Chief, I have a question. What's the latest on the communication towers we were talking about last month? What's going on? If it's been approved, or where is it stand at this point?
There's really been no change. That's a that's a very long term project. It's moving forward, from what I understand from Congresswoman Chu's office, is that our project is looking very promising, but no further communication since then. I would expect something probably by the end of summer, and I'm happy to bring that back to this commission and advise of our progress.
Thank you. Chief, thank you for the for the update. A couple of questions. You mentioned the events that have been going on in in L.A. and elsewhere in Southern California. And you mentioned that South Pass Police does not involve itself in civil immigration enforcement, which I I understand, and that's that's the law. But is there a city or department policy to that effect, just echoing what the state law is?
There is. So not only do we follow the the law with AB 54, but we also have a policy that mimics that. It's been around for some time. It's been not only internally, but externally peer reviewed. It's been reviewed by this commission, as well as other members of activist groups. And we want to be transparent. We want to be representative of our community. So when that policy came about, we we made a number of presentations and received, you know, for the most part, approval from the community and those we represent.
Is that something that's publicly available now that you could direct us to or share with us?
Anybody wanting to review that can go online to the police department's webpage, and under our policies, you'll see that listed there.
Thank you, chief. You also mentioned that some of our officers have been deployed to to L.A. to assist there. What does that do in terms of staffing within the city? What impact does that have?
So that'll have no impact to our availability to handle or respond to any calls for service. These officers, there is a mutual aid requirement that we send 50% of our on duty force anytime mutual aid is requested. We were fortunate, based on our new staffing levels, that we don't have to pull from our current on duty staff. We're able to pull from those that are off. So we called them in. They're working on an overtime capacity, and they will be out there. I believe the first deployment is till 9:00 PM tonight, and then we'll reevaluate and assess and see where we are if we need to extend that deployment.
Thank you, chief. Anything else? No. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight on the agenda, Commissioner Communications. Commissioners, anything you'd like to share?
Yes, I have a comment. Due to the ongoing climate that we have here in Los Angeles, I wanted to ask the chief and that our legal department on, as you can obviously see, I'm not white. I am brown, and so are my children. And many of our folks here, I mean, would look at Ms. LaRose, and she, in front of a nice person, she could pass as a Haitian. And we all we all could be detained. I do, you know, I feel safe when I'm in South Pasadena. However, due to medical necessities, I do have to go to USC in on San Pablo Street, which is not South Pasadena. And it's always on the back of my mind, what happens if I am detained for reason or no reason whatsoever. I'm not going to be demonstrated. I'm just gonna see a doctor. However, due to ongoing climate, I really think we should think about those things on the protection of the people that our people here in South Pasadena, as well as other communities, and what would happen if you get detained. And supposedly, the way it is, is that you get thrown in someplace, and then you are on a free ticket to San Salvador. So I want to know what recourse do we have as far as legally and as far as our police, if anybody can do anything for us, if we have get arrested, like in 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 a case, like I have a son that has a disability, is it autistic, he wouldn't understand what they're trying to do to him. As far as he knows, he was born here, and he is a full blooded American citizen. However, the climate right now, as you can see, many body can get detained and be thrown someplace else. So I want to know what do we have that we can protect our folks here in South Pasadena, and anybody really in the area, in Los Angeles area, because to me, it's extremely worrisome.
Thank you. Any other comments, commissioners?
So I want to want to echo Commissioner Cervantes's comments. There is a palpable sense of fear amongst people who are foreign born and also people who have limited English proficiency, or this is something that we have, I think we all have friends that we know of that are parents in our schools or families in our in our local schools and communities. And so just so everybody here, especially those who, you know, honor us by wearing badges and protecting us, are aware that this is something that's near and dear and highly concerning to to all of us. And so at General Hospital, I took care of five people from the protests yesterday, two of which had severe injuries. And obviously, it's complicated on both sides, and we want our law enforcement personnel to be safe. However, in addition to that, I have real concerns in this community for our friends and family members who are concerned about being taken away next time they go to Home Depot. And so I think you guys all know and feel this, and I want you to know that it's it's very real.
Thank you. Anything else? I just wanted to express my gratitude for my colleagues for naming me chair and speak for Commissioner Vice Chair Lou. We're excited. We're gonna have a good year. Thank you for the support. Also was grateful to be invited by Chief Solinsky to attend the badge pinning ceremony from the police department for new officers being promoted to corporal sergeant and detective. Excited for for their next steps in their careers. I was handed it. We're good? Sorry, we had some confusion with the scheduling of future meetings. Any other comments, commissioners? No? Okay, seeing none with no further items or comments from staff, I will now adjourn the meeting at 10:37 to our next regular meeting on, which will now be the last Tuesday of August at 5:30 PM. Thank you.